No mic? Now it is. I now call the 2024 Annual Town Meeting to order. We still have people checking in. Quite frankly, good on you guys. I mean, I thought the Bruins game was going to kill us tonight. In fact, now that he's retired, I asked Jack Edwards to be guest moderator so I could watch the game, and he said something to the effect of, "Not on your life." So, few people left to be checking in, but we will at least start with the preliminary work of the town meeting here. So if everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So one thing I always blow right past, and I was chided about it several town meetings ago, is to just let people know who's up here on the stage. Some of you may be here for your very first town meeting. But I am Sean Keely. I'm the elected town moderator, and I'll be trying to keep order and run a nice, efficient meeting and yet give everybody a chance to say what's on their mind. To my left is the Finance Committee, which I appoint to represent you, the town meeting, while putting together a budget. And later on, I'll point out that we're going to be reading off the numbers that the Finance Committee has recommended to town meeting for the budget. But if you could just raise your hand when I call your name. The members are Aaron Burr. I've got to put my glasses on. Aaron Burr. You didn't kill Hamilton. Kevin Sullivan, who's the chair. Michelle Wordeman. Stephen Amico. Michael Duggan couldn't be here tonight, but he's a longstanding member of the Finance Committee. And Antonio Pepper Santa Lucia, over at the end. To my right is the Select Board. And if you could just raise your hand when I say your name. The chair is Laura Fitzgerald Kemmet. Ann Rine. Is it Rine or Rain? Ann Rain. I apologize, Ann. Joe Weeks. Ed Heel. And I don't see David George, but he is also on the board. And then behind me are several of the town officials. They're all adding quite a bit up here, but I'm just going to point out two of them for you. One is our town administrator, Lisa Green, not directly behind me over here, and our town council, Kate Fedoroff. And as things go on, I'm sure I'll be calling on both of them to give explanations or to answer questions. So with the introductions out of the way, I would point out that the rules of tonight's meeting are found in the Parliamentary Guide for the Mass Moderators Association Town Meeting Time. I'm sure you brought your copy. Please take it out and follow along. Another thing, and I'm going to make a motion here. Sometimes I have to determine the quantum of the vote in order to have a legal vote. So sometimes there's a requirement of a two-thirds vote. I'll do it by voice, and then I'll make my best guess whether the ayes have it or the nays have it by that amount. If anybody disagrees with my judgment, and I've been wrong before, by all means, ask for a vote count, and we will vote with our cards and make sure of things. But I'm going to make a motion to allow the moderator to determine the quantum of the vote on voice votes. Thank you. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And thank you very much. Next, as is typical, we remember the members of our town who have passed since we last gathered together as town meeting. And so we have a couple of people who are very important, both to the town and to this town meeting, for many years. So we'd like to remember, if we can have a moment of silence, for Mary V. Foley, Philip R. Lindquist, Kathleen Monahan, and Stephanie McSweeney. Thank you. You'll also notice the decor for the stage tonight. I asked for something Athenian. Town meeting is a direct democracy exercise, and we have them to thank for it. I was going to wear a toga, but several members of the meeting insisted I not. The reason for the decoration is the Hanson Middle School Drama Club is putting on a play. It's all Greek to me. Will be featured Friday at 7:00 and Saturday, a double bill at 2:00 and 7:00. It's $10 admission. Come on out and support the kids. Also, before we get going. The amounts of money we have in the bank. So these are the things that we'll be spending out of during the course of the night. Well, actually, we're only going to spend out of one of these funds during the course of the night. But that's going to be the recreation. Thank you. Recreation retained earnings, $145,180. We'll be spending out of that fund. We do not plan to spend out of free cash or stabilization, however. Under free cash, we have $1,486,433.56. In the stabilization fund, we have $1,459,355.70. And with that, I will adjourn the annual town meeting and call into session the special town meeting. I've been informed by the clerk that we ran out of warrants because we had so many people here. If you could please share with your neighbor, it would be very helpful. So we're going to start with Article 1 of the special town meeting. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $404.06 to pay unpaid bills from prior fiscal years as printed in the special town meeting informational warrant. Thank you very much. It's been seconded. Explanation: These funds are needed to pay prior fiscal year bills received after the close of the fiscal year, and I would note that this requires a nine-tenths majority. So, any questions or comments? Very well, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by the required nine-tenths vote. Article 2. I move the town vote to transfer from ARPA, or ARPA, the sum of $1,627,239 for the purposes as more specifically identified in the special town meeting informational warrant. We have a second. Any questions or concerns? And you can take a look in the warrant. There's three expenditures there that will be paid out of ARPA and Plymouth County. Oh, yes, sir. Could you? If you could please come to the microphone. I'm just going to do that right off the bat. Anybody with a question, if you could please come to the microphone and identify yourself and the street you live on.
I don't think it's on. I don't know how to turn it on.
Yes, sir. Oh, it's not on. Yeah. The question is, is what is ARPA? And it's the American Rescue Plan Act. It's federal funds that were granted to the town.
Yeah, but what's that for?
I'll ask Ms. Green to answer your question.
That's not that multi-housing thing, is it?
No, no. Totally different.
I don't know.
No, 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 it's a fair question. Fair question.
So the ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, which was put into effect when COVID was upon us, these are federal funds that all communities were allotted by the federal government. The ARPA funds, the town still has an allotment through the Plymouth County Commissioners, and each of these projects are funded through this American Rescue Plan Act.
Yeah, but what's that for? What's it for?
We're going to be purchasing an ambulance with it. We are going to be utilizing $85,000 for a pond management study to study the health of our ponds and what we need to get them healthy. And then we're going to use $1,940,94,215 for the Pratt Place culvert, either repair or replacement.
Yeah, but do you have a breakdown of what you're spending on an ambulance and all the other stuff?
It's right here.
Well, I don't have a paper. I ran out of paper.
Oh, so $448,024 is going to be used to purchase a new ambulance, which will be replacing, I believe, an ambulance that is in 2014. We're going to use $85,000 towards a study of our ponds in the town of Hanson.
Oh, thank you. You're a sweetheart.
And then the $1,94,215 is going to be used for the engineering of design and study of the Pratt Place culvert, which has been in disrepair for quite a while.
Yeah, but where's that culvert? Where is that?
It's on Pratt Place, which is off of Winter Street.
Can you see it from the street?
I am not sure.
Yeah, I think we're getting kind of far.
Is it a swamp? Or what is it?
It's the entrance to the street. Pratt Place is a street.
It's a water pass?
And there's a culvert. I don't know.
Oh, it's under the road?
Yeah. And sir, could you please identify yourself and the street you live on?
Donald J. Trump. Gotcha. Thank you. My name's Charles Hyatt, 615 State Street.
Thank you.
Anderson, Massachusetts.
Thank you. And anybody else coming to the microphone, even if you think I know you and I should know your name, please state it. So, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash. Oh, didn't I promise we weren't going to spend out?
We have not stabilization, but free cash.
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe this is one of the few times we'll be spending out of free cash, so I do apologize. I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 for improvements of grading and the filling of potholes on private roads. Seconded, this will provide funding and authorize the grading of all private gravel roads in the town of Hanson up to two times per year. This money will be made available immediately after funding approval for spring grading. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4. I move the town vote to appropriate $50,000 from the Community Housing Reserve to the Hanson Housing Authority for the purposes of updating and developing a housing production plan. Seconded, explanation: A housing production plan is valid for five years, and Hanson's will expire on May 21, 2024. The plan assists Hanson Housing Authority in addressing the town's needs for affordable housing. An approved housing production plan assists the town of Hanson in receiving grant funding. And unused funds will be returned to the Community Preservation Committee Fund. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 4 is adopted. Article 5. I move the town vote to transfer $6,500 from the amount appropriated at the October 2, 2017 Special Town Meeting, Article 11, to fund procurement expenses related to Pratt Place culvert construction. Seconded, the Pratt Place culvert is in need of repair or replacement. These funds are needed for procurement expenses. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir. If you could come to the microphone.
Give some money to that one I asked about? Wasn't that included in that?
If he's asking, Mr. Trump is asking if we can, if this is covered by what we've already voted on. So Ms. Green.
So the procurement of the construction for Pratt Place or the repair is not an eligible expense under ARPA, so we have to pay for that outside of the ARPA money.
Isn't that kind of crazy?
I'm sorry, sir?
Again, if you could come to the microphone. And the introductions are necessary for the clerks.
Isn't that kind of crazy that we have to pay out of our pocket when you already got the money?
Well, this money is very restricted on how we can use it, and we can use it for engineering, we can use it for permitting, we can use it for construction and design. But that's the rules that the government came up with, that unfortunately bidding and procurement, which is the bidding process, is not included. I can't answer that question because I didn't make those rules, but we need to follow them.
Who made it? The governor?
Congress.
Who?
Congress.
Congress?
Yes.
My Congress?
It's everyone's Congress. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 5 is adopted. I will now call the special town meeting to a close and reopen the annual town meeting. Article 1. I move the town vote to hear reports to the various town officers, committees, special committees, and act thereon. Seconded, the reports voted on are those published in the 2023 Town Report, which was available in the lobby. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 1 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 1 is adopted. Article 2. I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer collector to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year 2025 as permitted by Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53F. Seconded, explanation: Every year this article is voted, it simply allows the treasurer collector to maintain accounts using credits instead of money to pay for banking charges. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 2 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 2 is adopted. Article 3. I move the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all paid elected officers and committees as printed in the informational warrant. And the one line is the town clerk for fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24. Explanation: This article sets the salaries for elected officials. Article 5 funds these salaries. I have a typo. It should be for fiscal year '24 and '25. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 3 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 3 is adopted. Article 4. I move the town vote to set the spending limits of the revolving accounts set forth in Hanson General Bylaw, Article 2-9, Section 3, as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded, explanation: This article sets the spending limits for the revolving, the annual revolving accounts. This article sets the spending limits for the annual revolving accounts. For those of you who do not have a warrant in front of you, the various funds are these. And I'll give you the fund and then the spending limit. The assessors, the spending limit is $1,500. Parks and Fields, spending limit $10,000. Library, $7,000. Senior Center Programs, $2,500. Senior Center Fees, $95,000. Conservation Commission, $7,500. Nathaniel Thomas Mill, $1,500. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 4 is adopted. Now we're really going to spend some money. Article 5. I move the town vote to determine what sums of money the town will raise and appropriate by taxation, transfer from free cash, transfer from the town ambulance funds, water department revenues, water surplus, Title V special revenue fund, MWPAT loan repayments receipts reserved for appropriation, conservation notice of intent fund, overlay surplus, and fund balance reserved for reduction of future excluded debt to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest, and to provide for a reserve fund for the 2025 fiscal year as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded, explanation: This article refers to the fiscal year '25 annual budget lines. So this is a little difficult for people without a warrant. Perhaps I should read the figures as well? No? What's that? Well, we're not going to approve the motion or the article as a consent. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read each line, and I'm going to pause. And if anybody would like to ask a question or to have a comment on any of the lines, I'll hold it. Just yell out, "Hold." I'll hold it, and then we'll go back to them in order after everything else has been, hopefully, adopted. And then we'll vote on the whole article as one big package. So, line 1, salaries. Accepted. Line 2, expenses. Accepted. I'm sorry. And this is under large line 122, Select Board and Administration. Line 3, capital outlay. Accepted. Lines 4 through 6 are the Finance Committee. Line 4, salaries. Accepted. Line 5, expenses. Accepted. Line 6, reserve fund. Accepted. Line 7 through 9 are the accountant. Line 7, salaries. Accepted. Line 8, expenses. Accepted. Line 9, audit. Accepted. Line 10 is for the assessors. Line 10, salaries. Accepted. Line 11, expenses. Accepted. Lines 12 through 14 are the treasurer collector. Line 12, salaries. Accepted. Line 13, expenses. Accepted. Line 14, MWPAT admin expenses. Accepted. Line 15 is legal services. Accepted. Lines 16 and 17 are information technology. Line 16, salaries. Accepted. Line 17, expenses. Accepted. Lines 18 and 19 are for the town clerk. Line 18, salaries. Accepted. Line 19, expenses. Accepted. Lines 20 and 21 are elections. Line 20, salaries. Accepted. Line 21, expenses. Accepted. Lines 22 and 23 are for the Board of Registars. Line 22, salaries. Accepted. Line 23, expenses. Accepted. Lines 24 and 25 are the Conservation Commission. We have a slight adjustment from your informational warrant. In line 24, at the far right, it breaks down where the money is coming from for salaries. The number under taxation should read $110,319. It does not change the recommended budget. So line 24, salaries. Accepted. Line 25, expenses. Accepted. Lines 26 and 27 are for the planning board. Line 26, salaries. Accepted. Line 27, expenses. Lines 28 and 29 are for the appeals board. Line 28, salaries. Accepted. Line 29, expenses. Line 30, economic development. Accepted. Line 31, postage. Expenses. Accepted. Lines 32 and 33, municipal buildings. Line 32, salaries. Accepted. Line 33, expenses. Accepted. Line 34, utilities. The next several lines, lines 35 to 56, come under public safety. Lines 35 to 37 are for the police. Line 35, salaries. Accepted. Line 36, expenses. Accepted. Line 37, capital outlay. Line 37 is held. Communications, line 38, salaries. Accepted. Line 39, expenses. Accepted. Fire and ambulance, line 40, salaries. Accepted. Line 41, expenses. Accepted. Line 42, capital outlay. Accepted. Public, I'm sorry, building inspection, line 43, salaries. Accepted. Line 44, expenses. Accepted. Gas inspection, line 45, salaries. Accepted. Line 46, expenses. Accepted. Plumbing inspection, line 47, salaries. Accepted. Line 48, expenses. Accepted. Weights and measures, line 49, salaries. Accepted. Line 50, expenses. Accepted. Wiring inspection, line 51, salaries. Accepted. Line 52, expenses. Animal control, line 53, salaries. Accepted. Line 54, expenses. Accepted. Tree warden, line 55, salaries. Accepted. Line 56, expenses. Lines 57 through 61 are education. So the lines 57 through 59 are for the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School. I'm sorry, the Whitman Regional School District. Line 57, operating assessment. Hold. Line 58, transportation. Line Fifty-eight, Transportation Assessment. Accepted. Line Fifty-nine, Debt Assessment. Accepted. Line Sixty is for the South Shore Regional Tech. Accepted. Line Sixty-one, Norfolk Bristol Agricultural School. Accepted. Line Sixty-two through Sixty-eight are for Public Works. Sixty-two through Sixty-five are for the Highway Department. Line Sixty, pardon me? Oh, I thought I heard something. Line Sixty-two, Salaries. Accepted. Line Sixty-three, Expenses. Accepted. Line Sixty-four, Snow and Ice. Snow and Ice is held. Line Sixty-five, Street Sweeping. Accepted. Line Sixty-six is Expenses for Townwide Fuel. Accepted. Line Sixty-seven and Sixty-eight are for Solid Waste. Line Sixty-seven, Salaries. Accepted. Line Sixty-eight, Expenses. Line Sixty-nine through Seventy-eight are for Human Services. Line Sixty-nine through Seventy-one are for the Board of Health. Line Sixty-nine, Salaries. Accepted. Line Seventy, Expenses. Accepted. Line Seventy-one, VNA Services. Accepted. Line Seventy-two through Seventy-four are for the Council on Aging. Line Seventy-two, Salaries. Accepted. Line Seventy-three, Expenses. Accepted. Line Seventy-four, VNA Services. Accepted. Line Seventy-five through Seventy-eight are really for Veterans. So, Seventy-five, Line Seventy-five, Salaries. Accepted. Line Seventy-six, Expenses. Accepted. Line Seventy-seven, Assistance. Accepted. Line Seventy-eight, Care of Soldiers' Graves. Accepted. Lines Eighty through Eighty-three are Culture and Recreation. Eighty and Eighty-one are for the Library. Line Eighty is Salaries. Accepted. Line Eighty-one, Expenses. Accepted. Line Eighty-two is for the Park and Fields. Park and Field Expenses, Line Eighty-two. Accepted. Line Eighty-three is for the Patriotic Observance Committee. Fixed Costs. These are Lines Eighty-four through Eighty-nine. Eighty-four, Line Eighty-four, Debt Service Principal. Accepted. Line Eighty-five, Debt Service Interest. Accepted. Line Eighty-six, Plymouth County Retirement. Accepted. Line Eighty-seven, Unemployment Compensation. Accepted. Line Eighty-eight, Group Insurance. Accepted. Line Eighty-nine, Risk Management. Accepted. Ninety through Ninety-three are for the Water Department. Line Ninety, Salaries. Accepted. Line Ninety-one, Expenses. Accepted. Line Ninety-two, Debt Service. Accepted. Line Ninety-three, Indirect Costs. Accepted. Wonderful. So, we'll go back to the held lines, and we'll address them in order. So, I have three held lines, Line Thirty-seven, Line Fifty-seven, and Line Sixty-four. So, any questions or comments on Line Thirty-seven? If you could please come to the microphone. If you could go back there, Kathy.
Kathleen Murray, 181 Union Street. My only question is the funding source, because perhaps I misunderstood you, Sean, but I thought you said we were not using the, the free cash funds?
Why don't we have Mr. Sullivan respond to your question?
Thank you.
In the overall budget, there's $794,000 of free cash that will be spent.
Oh, okay.
The moderator misspoke earlier.
All right. I'm good then. Thank you.
Sorry, Sean. Thank you. I did misspeak. I can admit it. So, any other questions or comments on Line Thirty-seven? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting Line Thirty-seven signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line Thirty-seven is accepted. Line Fifty-seven, Whitman Hansen Regional Operating Assessment.
Bruce Young, 594 Union Street. Just a quick question on this one. Are we voting to approve both columns, recommendations by the Finance Committee? I'm assuming we are, correct?
Yes, we are.
Both the recommended with the override and the recommended without the override?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'm assuming that the recommended calling, column with the override, as it applies to Article Six, which is the next column, okay? That additional number that will go into the recommended column with the override, I'm assuming is the amount over the 5% that these, both the Selectmen and the Finance Committee were looking for as far as an increase in the net operating assessment.
Mr. Sullivan. Do you want to address that?
It is the, that sole amount is the difference between the override and without the override.
Which would also be the deficit, the deficit of the town that we're looking at right now is the 372,141.
Okay. Let me just clarify that, Bruce. Right now, we're voting for without the override column. Because the Town Council just informed me that once, we have to vote Article Six, we have to approve Article Six for that column to take place. So, right now, because we haven't gotten to Article Six, we are voting the very last column, which is the Finance Committee Without Override Recommends.
I'm assuming that, just hear me out, if we disapprove Article Six, okay, I'm assuming it will revert back to the non-override column.
That's right. What we're voting on is the final column, Finance Committee Without Override.
Okay.
That's what this line is.
So, when do we vote on the column without the override?
Next article would then add the require, the amount of money that's needed.
We're voting without. Without.
Right. The without column.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions or concerns? I wish my kids were here to bring in the microphone. For those of you who don't get the reference, during COVID, we would have my kid, I made them come to town meeting and bring microphones around. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Hillary Niffen, Gorwood Drive. I'm a member of the school committee. I just want a point of clarification. If, and this might not be pertinent because we haven't voted on Article Six, but the school assessment is contingent on Article Six being on the ballot and that passing. So, if Article Six does not pass, we do not revert. There is no assessment to the town, and the school district will start the budget process all over again. So, I just think that that's an important piece of information.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if people are reading it, that if we vote on the Finance Committee without the override, that that would be the assessment amount. It will not. We start the process again. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Line Fifty-seven being accepted, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Line Fifty-seven is accepted. Line Sixty-four, Snow and Ice. That was you, Kathy? Do you have anything to say? All right. All those in favor of accepting Line Sixty-four, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So, before we take a vote, or before we go into debate on the whole budget, if there is any, I just want to say, we just spent about 20 minutes on that, but I want to thank the, both the Finance Committee and the Selectmen, or the Select Board, the Town Accountant, the Town Administrator, they started working on this back in November, and it's a very difficult document to put together, and so thank you very much for all your dedication in putting this together. So, any questions or concerns about Article Five as a whole? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Five signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Five is adopted. Article Six, you shouldn't have gone back to your seat up there. You could start moving to the microphone now. No, 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 don't do that. Don't do that. Maybe there's no questions. I don't know. I will. Article Six, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate an additional $372,141 from taxation to fund the Whitman Hansen Regional School District Operating Assessment in fiscal year 2025, provided, however, that the amount raised and appropriated hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon passage of a so-called Proposition Two and a Half Ballot Question under General Laws, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C, Subsection G. Do I have a second? Seconded. The explanation, this article refers to the fiscal year 2025 annual budget line that would be increased if a Whitman Hansen Regional School District Operational Assessment override is voted at the town, at the May 2024 Annual Town Election. So, any questions or concerns? Yes, sir?
Has Whitman voted on?
Oh, if you could just introduce.
I'm sorry, Wobbling down 93 High Street.
Thank you.
Has Whitman voted on the ship?
They're doing it right now.
Oh. So, if they don't vote on it, it doesn't pass, and if we don't vote on it, it doesn't pass, right? Either one.
Either one.
Either one. First of all, congratulations, town employees and town departments, you got all the money you wanted to ask for, except for now. And we'll see how this goes. And I'm sure it's all finance on the back of the taxpayers. There may be some freebies thrown in there from the government, but mostly it's on our backs. But I want to ask you about this override. This isn't one of these that go away for a building or anything. It stays on forever, right?
That's correct.
At two and a half percent every year? And each year, it's two and a half percent on the new amount that's gone up from the two and a half percent. So, it just keeps going and going? It's the miracle of compounding, I believe, that Ben Franklin said, oh, he's working against the taxpayer and working for all the departments. So, I think it's about time we voted no on this and stop these overrides and give the taxpayer a break.
Any other questions or concerns? Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Six signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The chair's in doubt. Thank you. So, we have appointed three tellers. So, when I ask for the ayes, if you could please raise your card up high and keep it up until the teller has had a chance to record your vote. All those in favor of Article Six signify by raising your blue card at this time. Oh, they are. Thank you for coming into the room. The, if we, and we were able to get the overflow room voters?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Hayes, yes?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. All those opposed to Article Six, please signify by raising your card now. All votes are accounted. You can put your cards down. Mr. Hayes?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
One-twelve.
One-twelve?
Forty-three.
So, quick math here. Thank you. So, on this matter, the ayes are 127, the nays are 231. Article 6 is not adopted. I'm told by Town Council, however, this question wasn't asked before we took the vote. You will still see the override on your ballot when you go to the town election. If it's accepted, then that money is still raised. It would just have to be a...
No, 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 it's not raised.
Oh, it's not?
It gives us the ability to...
Hold on, I'm going to have the expert do this.
No, no. So, the ballot question is still on the ballot that's already been placed, and what the ballot question does is it determines what your capacity to raise taxation would be. So if your budget or your levy limit is a glass, the ballot question could increase that glass. What you guys do here tonight is you decide what amount of money to give and whether or not to fill that glass or not. So if the ballot question were to pass, it means you've raised the limit, and next town meeting, or the town meeting after, you can fill that glass or not, depending upon what you want to do, okay? But the ballot question doesn't go away because we vote this down tonight. I just wanted to be clear on that.
I can't make out the individual question. If somebody has a question, I'll entertain it. Miss, one moment. Ms. Federoff.
So, the vote decides what your taxes will actually be. It determines how much money you give to the school. And the woman who was here up earlier, she's on the school committee, and she was correct. So it serves as a rejection of their full assessment, and it goes back to the school committee, and they decide whether or not to accept the lower amount, okay? And if they accept the lower amount, that's the amount that's raised. If they resubmit another assessment, it could force another town meeting, okay? And then theoretically, if that were to fail and the school committee rejected it again, you could have a super-town meeting where both towns get together and decide what to do. Okay? Understood?
They don't make the last picture for next year if it passes.
Yes.
So it does go up? It can go up? Next year?
All right. Very good. Article 6 has been rejected. Article 7. "I move the town vote to adopt the capital improvement program as presented by the Capital Improvement Committee, as printed in the informational warrant." Seconded. The explanation. "This is the annual article which approves the capital improvement matrix for the next fiscal year." Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 7, oh, please come to the microphone then.
I'm assuming that there's an article in here too, for what we're going to spend this year on capital improvements, correct?
It's Article 10.
Article 10.
And how much is that article for?
So...
Ms. Kemet.
What's the total?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Kemet.
I didn't want to be presumptuous. So, we actually are going to modify Article 10. So as it's printed right now, it's for $361,000. It will be for $50,000 if our amended motion passes.
You said $60,000?
$50,000. In other words, the only item on there that the FinCom and the Select Board are recommending that we spend money on is the item that is from the ambulance fund, the Lucas CPR device, because we want to try to preserve free cash in the event that things go south with the schools, and we've got to have some, we've got to have additional free cash based on Article 6.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Young?
So, the question I have, if that's all we're going to spend, why in fiscal year 2025 does the capital improvement program, why does it have an amount of $4,254,024? Shouldn't those two, shouldn't those two columns, shouldn't those two figures match up?
I'm not sure. What are you referring to, Mr. Young? What are you, what document are you looking at?
I'm looking at the capital improvement matrix.
Right. And...
Why don't those two figures match up? Because according to the capital improvement bylaw, that's what should happen. And then the difference, the difference should be in the other, in the other columns from fiscal year 2026 through 2030. Did you follow me?
Right. The...
You can't have a difference there. Those should match, and be in accordance with the way the bylaw is written. So...
Right. We...
Obviously, that money wasn't prioritized correctly.
One argument is, is that we could spend that money at the October town meeting.
But that's, that's not going to happen.
I can't predict that. No. We don't, we don't need cross-conversation, but it's theoretically possible. Now, the matrix is a wish list, basically. It's a wish list.
It's a wish list, but it's also supposed to, by the Capital Improvement Committee, be prioritized by year on where that spending is going to take place for those particular capital items. In this particular case, it didn't happen, okay? Directly in contrary to the capital improvement bylaw. That's why we have a capital improvement bylaw, and we have a capital improvement committee. So, that's all I'm saying. Those two figures should match.
We have the Chair of the, of the Capital Improvement Committee.
Franklin, C-604 Brook Street. So, we did that this year with the department heads. We went through and prioritized. What usually happens is the special town meeting in October will then reprioritize this matrix if it's not going to be done 2025 and push it to the year. So for, I'll use an example here. The E3 Tower 1, that's always been on, that's been on the matrix for the last five years or so, and the grant money that they're looking for may possibly come here and be in October town meeting. So what we would do in this case, if it's not going to be on October town meeting for free cash or another funding source, we'll simply take and move it to a fiscal year with the department heads' guidance and what will match with them.
You understand what I'm saying, though, right?
I do get what you're saying, but in the past town meetings, even before I was on the capital committee, what we would do is we would, we would have a prioritized matrix of free cash, and the rest of the items that were on here would be essentially listed on the matrix but not on the article itself, because you're not actually spending money on the article itself until the, you know, until the fiscal year '25 is, I guess, over. So...
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Does that satisfy you?
Not really, but I'll accept it.
Well, you can ask the question again. I mean, what's not clear? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Mr. Malisi.
I already made the point, so...
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns about Article 7? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 7 is adopted. Oh. This is again my fault. I was supposed to declare that a quorum was present. Our quorum is 100 people. We far exceeded it. Article 8. Article 8. "I move the town vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaws, Article 2-12, classification and compensation by deleting Sections 11a through 11e in their entirety and inserting the new sections 11a through 11e as printed in the informational warrant." Seconded. Explanation. "The changes to the compensation plan are in bold italicized text. The changes include: 1) removal of transfer station attendant and Camp Kwani event coordinator as now union roles; 2) creation of the emergency management support position; 3) adjustment of salary ranges to reflect market demand." Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 8 is adopted. Article 9. "I move the town vote to appropriate or reserve from fiscal year 2025 community preservation funds estimated annual revenues in the amount recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, as printed in the informational warrant." Seconded. The explanation. "This article ensures that Hanson's community preservation accounts are compliant with the Community Preservation Act, which requires that a certain portion of the CPA funds be set aside for open space projects, community housing projects, historical projects, and recreational, recreation projects." Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 9 is adopted. Article 10. "I move the town vote to transfer $361,000..." I'm sorry. I'm going to recognize Ms. Kemet for a substitute article.
I move that the town, I don't have the motion, so I'm going to have to just kind of... Thanks. I move the town vote to transfer $50,000 from the ambulance fund for the purchase of the Lucas CPR device.
Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Yes, sir.
Mike Means, 342 South Street. I'm on the Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee. I just want people to be aware, we're looking for this money for a roof, because the roof is leaking. So, we want to save the building. We should replace that roof. If we want to let it rot, the building out and rot the floor out, we can let the roof go.
Any other questions or concerns? Ms. Kemet.
Mr. Means, thank you for, oh, no, I'm not, I just wanted to thank you for that comment. We are planning on putting these items on the October town meeting warrant. I think that we were unclear that it was in the board, the Select Board and FinCom. I don't believe we're clear as to the state of that roof at this point. If you want to, I think we could reconsider that right now if you give us a moment.
Okay, yeah. If we can motion to do that now, it would be great. I hate to see the old building getting destroyed. We talked to Cap, what the capital improvement last year, saying it's going to be leaking soon. This year, well, it's leaking unfortunately. It's the original roof that was built in the late '70s.
And it's never going to get less expensive to fix, so...
No, it's just going to get worse. The front's cedar and the back is asphalt. Trying to keep it the exact same so it matches with the historical of the building.
I'm going to make a motion to amend Article 10. Mr. Keely, could I see the motion again?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So, I move the town vote to transfer $35,000 from free cash and $50,000 from the ambulance fund for the roof repair for Nathaniel Mel and the Lucas CPR device respectively.
Seconded. All those, any questions or comments on the amended motion? So we're voting on the motion, on the amendment right now. All those in favor of amending the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 10 is amended. Now, any questions or comments on the overall article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 10 as amended signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 10 is adopted. Article 11. "I move the town vote to charge for each written demand issued by the collector a fee of $30 to be added to and collected as part of the tax as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 60, Section 15, effective as of May 6, 2024." Seconded. The explanation is the Massachusetts general law allows a fee of up to $30 be charged for all demands for late taxes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. I believe the ayes have it. Would somebody like a counted vote? Very well. All those in favor of Article 11, please signify by raising your blue card at this time. Barbara?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. All those opposed to Article 11, please signify by raising your blue card now. Yes, please.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Bear with me. Seventeen, twenty-one. Carry the two, six, eight, ten. So is it 190 to 101? So by a vote of 190, yes, to 101, no, Article 11 is adopted. We have a slight correction on Article 12, so what I'm going to do is I'll explain to you how it's slightly different in, printed in the warrant after I make the motion. "I move the town vote to amend Article 2-11, Section 2 of the Capital Improvement Committee General Bylaws of Hanson by reducing the capital improvement expense subject to the jurisdiction of the committee from $35,000 to $20,000 by deleting said section in its entirety and replacing it with the following." I should read the entire thing, Madam Clerk? All right. Buckle up. Section two, the committee shall study proposed capital projects and improvements involving major non-recurring tangible assets and projects which, one, are purchased or undertaken at intervals of not less than five years, two, have a useful life of at least five years, and, three, cost over twenty thousand dollars. In order that the town, one, coordinate development of a capital improvement budget with the operating budget of the current year, and, two, develop a capital program including the subsequent five years, all officers, boards, and committees, including the select board and the regional school committee, shall, by a date specified annually by the Capital Improvement Committee, prepare for the committee information concerning all anticipated capital improvement projects requiring town meeting action for the period specified. No appropriation shall be voted for a capital improvement request by a department, board, or commission unless the proposed capital improvement is considered in the committee report. However, in order to allow consideration of a project reflecting an extraordinary circumstance which must be addressed before the formulation of the next year's capital program, a department, board, or committee may submit a proposal to the Capital Improvement Committee for consideration. The committee must then submit a report to the Finance Committee. Recommended. Oh, I'm sorry. This is all, this is, recommended vote, voted five zero, and the FinCom recommended voted five zero, and the Board of Selectmen with a satisfactory, that seems incorrect. It's part of the article? I don't think so. Sorry, so I'll start from the final sentence I was trying to read. The committee must then submit a report to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen with a satisfactory explanation why the proposal was not considered by the Capital Improvement Committee at a time when it could be included in the committee's report. Each of the boards and committees must vote that the proposed project meets the extraordinary circumstance issue. So, that is the motion. The, it's seconded, seconded, thank you. The difference in your informational warrant is there was a typo. It read, have a useful life of at least ten years, and that has to be five years to harmonize with the rest. And then, as I read at the very bottom of that proposed language, the, the language, fourth line from the bottom, recommended vote, voted five zero, get rid of the colon, and then recommended voted five to zero, and then you have the language of the bylaw. Clear? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twelve signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article twelve is adopted. Article thirteen, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sums of money to operate Camp Kiwanee during fiscal year twenty twenty-five under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half, as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded, the explanation, this is a level-funded budget. Any questions or comments about Article thirteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirteen signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, Article thirteen is adopted. Once again, we have a slight amendment to the, what appears in the informational warrant, so I'll explain where I change things after I make the motion. Article fourteen, I move the town vote to amend Article two dash twelve, twenty-one of the Town of Hanson bylaws to require all elected and appointed boards to post meeting agendas and minutes of their meetings as follows. Article two dash twenty-one, Town Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Section one, all Town of Hanson Boards, Committees, and Commissions elected and appointed shall video or audio record all meetings, which recordings shall be posted to the town's website and/or the Whitman Hanson Cable Access Television Website unless protected as an executive session. Section two, all Town of Hanson Boards, Committees, and Commissions elected and appointed shall post all meeting agendas on the town website forty-eight hours in advance and open session meeting minutes to the town's website within three meetings or thirty days, whichever is later. The difference is, is in Section two, again, there was a change to the language that added that last, last clause, forty-eight hours in advance and minutes of their meetings within three meetings or thirty days, whichever comes first. Any questions or comments? Could you come to the microphone, please, and just introduce yourself?
Why are, why are the executive meetings exempt?
Hear from Ms. Fedoroff. Oh, could you say your name, sir?
Scott Cheaney, High Street.
Thank you.
So, pursuant to the law, executive session meeting minutes may be withheld and not released to the public until such time as the matter is resolved. So, for example, if you have litigation and the board had an executive session to discuss it with me on strategy or how to deal with the litigation, you obviously wouldn't want to disclose it to the other side, so that timeframe does not apply.
Are there any broad statements or generic statements, given that we had a meeting regarding this, but no details will be released? Or is it all in secret?
The agendas have to contain the executive session so you know if the board is convening an executive session, because you'll see it right on the agenda and you'll see the reasons for it. It will say, purpose three, litigation, something like that, and it will cite the case.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Young, could you come to the microphone? Mr. Young.
Yeah, why should it take so long, why should it take such a long time period to post the agendas for open session meetings to the, to the website? It says, within three meetings or thirty days.
Ms. Fedoroff.
So, Mr. Young, that was corrected in the motion. It's forty-eight hours for the agenda, which is what the legal requirement is under the open meeting law. So, that's what Sean said when he read the motion. The warrant article itself is incorrect. So, it's forty-eight hours to post the agendas, and then three meetings or thirty days.
Post, okay.
To post the meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Nicholas Ketchel, Laughlin Street. I was wondering why the, the video and audio recordings aren't present in the second, well, the second section? This is to remove video and audio recording?
Yeah, why aren't? Ms. Kemet.
Are you asking why the explanation doesn't include anything about that? That's because we already passed that Section one, so what we're voting on tonight is Section two.
So, there'll still be video and audio?
Oh, yeah, yep, yep. This is, this is taking it the next step.
Any other queo? Yes.
Owings, DSA, Brick Street and Hanson. The audio goes to Whitman Hanson Community Access, but we're not keepers of the record. The town is, and so that's why the audio may be available, but it's not the record. It's what the town has that's posted.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article fourteen, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article fourteen is adopted. Article fifteen, I move the town vote to transfer sixteen thousand five hundred dollars from the ambulance revenues to purchase three laptop computers. Seconded, the explanation, this is requested to purchase three laptops used for patient care reports as well as other EMS and life safety programs on the ambulances. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article fifteen signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article fifteen is adopted. Article sixteen, we have a motion to pass over Article sixteen. Do I have a second? Seconded, all those in favor of passing over Article sixteen signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article sixteen is passed over. Article seventeen, I move the town vote to amend the town, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun. This is Mr. Campbell's motion. Article seventeen, Mr. Campbell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Campbell. I live at one fifty Woodby Nav, as well as I am also a member of the Planning Board and this year's chair. I will move this question different than what is in the warrant. So, please bear with me while I read this into the record. I move the Town of Hanson Town Meeting Quorum, direct the Select Board to issue a letter of action to the Massachusetts Fifth Plymouth District Representative, that would be for Precinct one, David Tocost, the Massachusetts Sixth Plymouth District, Town of Hanson Precinct two and three, currently is an open vacancy, and the Massachusetts Second Plymouth Senator, Michael Brady, collectively, the Town of Hanson State of Massachusetts legislators, to immediately take action to repeal the Baker-Polito Administration's proposed amendment of Section three A, Mass. General Law, C forty A zoning, multifamily zoning as-of-right in MBTA communities. The MBTA Communities Act is the more commonly known name. In addition to that move, for Article seventeen, the Town of Hanson twenty twenty-four may annual town meeting warrant be referred to a committee, the Town of Hanson MBTA Communities Act Committee, to be appointed by the town moderator. Said committee is to study and provide a comprehensive report at the next regularly scheduled special town meeting, tentatively October of twenty twenty-four, on all aspects, impacts, and assessments regarding a recommended action on the adoption or denial of the MBTA Communities Law and zoning amendments. The membership being composed of one, Town of Hanson Planning Board member, one, Town of Hanson Zoning Board member, one, Town of Hanson Select Board member, two members from citizens from Precinct three, which is the largest impact precinct of the zoning change, one member from Precinct two, and one member from Precinct one. This committee should meet in accordance with all Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws, OML, guidelines, meet no less than twice a month, and send a preliminary report to the Town of Hanson Moderator, Town Planner, and Town, Town of Hanson Town Administrator no later than July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded, Mr. Campbell, would you like to explain your motion?
Thank you for the second. Despite the MBTA Communities Act requiring applicable towns to only establish a district defined as a zone of reasonable size in which an allowance for as-of-right multifamily housing is permitted, again, it's just defining a zone, within the half-mile of public transportation, for Hanson it's the commuter rail, must conform to all Hanson state building codes or a plan would be denied. It has to apply to the double-A zoning, because the, the proposed zone is just an overlay. On top of all that, this subject has been discussed at multiple public hearings by both the Town of Hanson Planning Board and the Select Board, which were hardly attended. When asked for input from town offices, the Planning Department received input from one office. Although this is applicable to the Affordable Housing Act, not the federal Section eight, Affordable Housing Act in Hanson, affordable housing is if you make an annual income of ninety-two thousand dollars. Indeed, as already seen, it is affecting on the Mass. State Grants application seen by our Town of Hanson grant writers. The Town of Hanson Planning Board has heard on numerous occasions and agree. This was legislation rushed through the state government machine in an attempt at a quick resolution to a larger issue without thinking it through or respecting all the Commonwealth's citizens' rights protected by our Constitution. I ask this under Article nineteen, adopted in seventeen eighty, of the Massachusetts Constitution Declaration of Rights, which states, "The people have a right in an orderly and peaceable manner to assemble, to consult upon the common good, give instruction to their representatives, and to request a legislative body by the way of address, petitions, remonstrances, redress of the wrongs done them, and of grievances they suffered." Move this motion. Thank you.
Ms. Kemet.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. The Select Board met just prior to town meeting, and we unanimously voted to support this initiative. It was motioned by Mr. Weeks and seconded by Ms. Mrs. Rain, and we applaud the Planning Board for taking this initiative. We've been very, I guess, it's been a difficult position because it's our job to try to make sure that the town is compliant, but none of us felt comfortable with this regulation. We do feel that it's overreach, so I, we welcome the opportunity to reach out to our legislators and see what they can do. Additionally, I think that if we get pushed back, it will allow us to revisit this if we need to, if we're required to, sometime in October at the town meeting, and by then we will know what other towns have decided to vote no, what kind of repercussions have they seen, and, you know, just in general, what the state of, of the union is at that point in time. So, I think it allows us to try to influence this and push back, and it allows us to learn from other towns.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Bob Montell, ninety-three High Street. Sounds like they think they're gonna get voted down today, so I say, let's knock this thing out of the park and get rid of it now.
Mr. Campbell, any other questions or comments? We have two people coming to the.
This is on the motion, correct?
Yes. We have one motion before the, before the meeting. Yes, sir.
I am in agreement.
If you could please introduce yourself.
My name is Daniel W. Straubman. I live, I live at five-ten Monpont Street, Hanson, Massachusetts. I'm in agreement with the man over here. I believe that the intention put before you was deceptive. It is my belief that if we were to hold this vote right now.
Actually, Mr. Straubman, let me just make a, a point here. I don't think it's right to bring personalities into debate and to ascribe intentions to people. Mr. Campbell made a motion and he gave his reasons for.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll try something else then. If we are to vote in favor of the MBA, MBTA law, whether it be now or when the committee, this proposed committee has asserted its findings in October, if we are to vote in favor, then that is a guarantee that right there, right then, we lose, we surrender, it's over. Maura Healey, the state, they get what they want. That's the answer, that's the end of it. If we vote against it, your elected representatives are correct that it would be a difficult road ahead. That's absolutely true. We might lose, but we might win. This is Massachusetts, the birthplace of America and the cradle of the American Revolution. I don't believe that we surrender here, so I would like to counter that we push through, we hold this vote today, and we vote no on the MBTA law, and send it back to Maura Healey and shove it in her lying face.
While inspirational, Mr. Straubman, we don't, we don't need to characterize the governor like that, and I should point out. And I would point out, this was passed by a governor named Baker, not Healey. Mr. Mr. Campbell.
Yes, Mr. Rogers, the last two speakers, if this, certainly to the speaker that said that this is a kind of a ruse, it's not, and then if this dies tonight, does that mean it does? And then if this dies tonight, does that mean it doesn't come back for October? It could. What we're doing, or what my motion does, is it goes back to the legislators that pushed this through many years back, and it gets them to do something that no other town in Massachusetts has done, and that is to put this back on the legislation that enacted this in the first place. It also sends a very strong message to the government that we're going to hold our legislators
Mr. Week, oh, I'm sorry. Were you done, Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Weeks, and there's somebody behind you.
So I, I applaud Joe putting this amendment forward. I strongly urge everybody to vote yes on this amendment. Again, this is the amendment. This is not the MBTA article, which we're going to be talking about afterwards. This amendment is doing what everybody wants us to do, and something that we've been talking about pretty much week in, week out, since we've been forced with having to deal with this, which is going on record and saying that we are in fact against it. So by voting yes for this, you are holding us accountable to actually give voice to you all that we've all not only heard time and time again, but this board in particular. I don't necessarily want to speak to every, for everybody here, but we've been pretty adamant on, on an open record, saying that we are against these mandates. We don't feel like they are right. This amendment will just give us a collective okay to say, we want you to take action, and therefore we're going to take action. This is not a symbolic amendment. You are actually giving us action items that we are going to take seriously and have been taking seriously, so I do urge you to vote yes on this.
This gentleman was coming to the microphone earlier, so if you could please come.
Scott Cheney, High Street. Will the final recommendations of your committee be put on a townwide ballot, or is this all going to be done through a committee?
Mr. Campbell?
Sure. As far as the ballot goes, this, for my, my specific motion or, or on the MBTA zoning. So my, for my specific motion, this actually takes action tonight in order to stop Article 17 and move it to the legislation. As far as it going before a town ballot, we had asked that previously. The Mass Beacon Hill doesn't think that it's necessary for it to put it on ballot. That's why they rolled it out the way that they rolled it out. Council may be able to add a little bit better understanding about transferring of it from the MBTA Communities Act, from our article, in order to go over to a town ballot, but I believe that it's already been stated that it's not applicable to go to a town ballot. That's why my motion comes forward now is to move it in a different direction, to buy some, you know, get some time.
Yes, sir.
To you, moderator. So as a town, how do we get the vote on it to voice our opinion on a no or a yes? If it's already predetermined that the MBTA Act or the state is going to do what they want to do, regardless of how we feel, how do we get our voice heard?
I will, well, here, let me just make a comment, and, and Ms. Fedorov may very well correct me on this, but I, I would point out that the, this zoning change could happen at any town meeting, even if we vote no on it tonight. It could come up again in October. The, but what Mr. Campbell has proposed is that this committee meet and make a recommend, a set of recommendations before the next town meeting, so that we're all a little bit better informed before taking a vote on this zoning change. Yes, sir.
So it sounds to me, maybe you can clarify this, that the only way we could stop this is to keep showing up, but even if we keep showing up, there's no, there's no, there's no guarantee that it won't, that we can't prevent it.
I, I think...
So to your point, we either take it or we, you know, it's being rammed up.
Right. Well, and...
Am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong, and, and the, and the point is, is that it would, you know, the, whether you vote for or against what was proposed as Article 17, and again, it's not on the floor right now, these changes to the, to the zoning laws are necessary in order to get quite a bit of money from the state in grants. So the town meeting will ultimately have to decide, maybe not even at one meeting, but at several meetings, whether the grant money is worth changing the zoning, or if we're going to hold fast. And, and that's ultimately the town meeting's decision.
Right, but we, but if the town, like the town showed up here tonight to vote it down, pretty much, I think we all took a vote, they would shoot it down, but yet we're being prevented from doing it. And we have to keep coming back here and doing this, which we will do.
And, and I encourage people to always come to town meeting. I, I don't want anybody excluded, but the fact is, is that whether the, whether the proposed Article 17 that's in the informational warrant is voted down tonight, it could still be voted on and voted for in October.
And it could be voted down there again, and keep going, and keep going, and keep going. How do we stop it?
It could be, and, and what, and I'll have Mr. Campbell respond to that.
Actually, Mr. Cheney, you bring up a very good question, and that's how do we stop it? We have a five-member planning board. I'm one of four other members. We're here tonight to assist in hearing what the town has been saying to everybody, without turning around and saying a no to the State House. Saying no, we will warn everybody, and I'd like to make sure that my motion's moved appropriately, but we will warn everybody that we don't know the ramifications to their full extent for the towns that have said no, which so far there have only been four, of which one of them has only been a mass transit community. We don't know, we haven't seen the impact yet. What my motion does is doesn't say no, but it says Hanson's not going to take, you know, a forced, a forced zoning act.
Yes, sir.
Those are four brave towns.
I'm going to, I'm going to take this woman right over here.
I have an amendment, but, all right.
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Mercy of Pine Grove Ave. So my question is, what are the consequences as far as we know at this point? If we vote down Article 17, what are the consequences?
I'll have Ms. Green address that.
I just want the information.
No, 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 that's great. That's wonderful. Ms. Green.
Mr. Moderator, it's a point of order. We're not on Article 17.
Right, and, and just to be clear, we're not voting on what was Article 17. Mr. Campbell made a different motion. Ms. Green.
Good evening. So the Attorney General for the state did put out an advisory regarding this, these, the zoning, and I apologize, my voice is a little weak, so I'm talking as loud as I can. The Attorney General did say that this is a law. All MBTA communities must comply with the law. Communities that do not currently have a compliant multifamily zoning district, and again, that's all this town meeting is doing, is just creating a district, not building any housing of any type, just creating.
Ms. Green has the floor.
Noncompliant MBTA communities are also fail, I'm sorry, communities that fail to comply with the law may be subject to civil enforcement action, which means a lawsuit by the Attorney Generals against, against the town. Noncompliant MBTA communities are also subject to the administrative consequences of being rendered ineligible to receive certain forms of state funding. Importantly, MBTA communities cannot avoid their obligation under the law by foregoing this funding. The law requires the MBTA communities shall have a compliant zoning district, and does not provide any mechanism by which a town or city may opt out of this requirement. So to answer your question, we could face a lawsuit by the Attorney General, and we are going to require to hire...
Please, everybody, Ms. Green is speaking.
We will be required to bring on special counsel to defend the town against this lawsuit. So it will cost taxpayers, we, we don't even have an estimate of how many, how much money to defend us against this. And also what this does is it renders us ineligible to apply for many grants that the town has received over the last few years, millions, millions of dollars. And one important grant, just today, our Council on Aging received wonderful note information, wonderful award of $300,000 grant that's going to support their supportive day program at the senior center. What this money does is it's going to allow our senior center to build, to build another room to add on to the senior center of this particular program. Not complying with this MBTA communities law will take this grant away. So they, they are very serious with this, and I can only, I know this...
Please, everybody.
I do know there's a lot of information out there that is, they're, they're requiring us to build. That is not the law. We are only creating this, the, the zoning. What we're trying to do is preserve the amount of grants that the town has received the last two years, again, exceeding $2 million. That allows us to do many, many projects for the town. So the town will lose eligibility, because when the grant administrators look at our application, there is a box that says, are you compliant? As soon as we check no, the application is no longer considered.
Yes, sir.
Dan McDonough, Carriage Road. I'd like to propose an amendment to Joe, and Joe, I respect and enjoy the, your motion, to accept the first part and send a message to our representatives. One, we don't have a state representative, so I appreciate it going to, to the board, but I don't have a ton of confidence. I say we stand shoulder to shoulder, vote tonight, stand next to Milton and Marshfield, and that's going to go to a Massachusetts Supreme Court, because why do we have a Hanson Board, Planning Board, if the state's going to ram this down our throats anyway? So I put forward a motion to send a message and continue to vote tonight if we have it. Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't understand your motion.
I, I'd like, if I could, to split Joe's proposal. There's two. One, to send a message to Senator Brady, and the second was to put off the vote and kick it to a planning board. I would like to still send the message to our representatives, but leave the vote for tonight.
Mr. Campbell?
Absolutely. Great point. Unfortunately, we can't do both. It either has to go to the legislation and have them file, which kind of lighten out two fuses at the same time. We're covering the town by sending it over to the legislators, some of which were part of the start of this with the Baker-Polito Administration. The second part of it is getting further information by our impacted town citizens in conjunction with town land use boards and folks at town hall that are understanding of what's going on, to be able to give back a report for next, for next October. So my motion puts this off to the side, so again, that the state doesn't hear that we said absolutely no, and all those little checkbox the town administrators spoke about on grant funding, we are still in compliance, which we will be until December of this year. We have some time to still be in compliance. We're trying to buy some time to get a better understanding. My approach to it puts it right back to where it came from.
Mr. McDonough, would you like to follow up?
I appreciate that, Joe. In that case, I go to reject it, put the vote tonight. We are very serious, too. I'd like to make that motion. Thanks a lot.
Well, Mr. McDonough, I believe you can make the motion. I think what we need to do is to take a vote on Mr. Campbell's motion, and then you can rise and move and, and read the language for Article 17 as printed in the warrant, and then take a vote.
I'll recant my motion. I'll take it back. It's too confusing. Thanks.
Okay. So I've been advised by council. Mr. McDonough, if you could come back to the microphone. So you're moving to amend Mr. Campbell's motion in what way?
So I take it back. If he, if he said, can we take it back or not?
Yeah, you can take anything back.
I'll rescind.
Okay.
I'd rather just have the vote tonight, and that's my stance on it, but that was my hope. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm David Pell from 30 Great Cedar. This is crazy, but we're being forced to go through this crap. But what I wanted everybody to know that Maura Healey's ex-girlfriend is now on the State Supreme Court, so that's another battle that... No, that's true.
I'm, I'm, okay, hold on, hold on.
That's a, no, it isn't out of the water. That's a fact.
Sir.
Her ex-girlfriend is on the State Supreme Court.
Sir.
So I'm just making a, yes, it does.
One moment, please. First of all, all comments must be made through me as moderator. We can't have cross-debate in a crowd this big. It just won't work. So on the other hand, it may be a fact, but it is not relevant to the...
No, it is, because the gentleman just puts forth that we want to go and go to the, in fight in the Supreme Court to defeat this amendment, so it does make a difference. So that's one of the things we have to be aware of. That's all I'm saying.
All right. Thank you. You made your point. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Stacy Sabeck, 742 High Street. With all respect to Ms. Green, I understand you received this, but it's nothing but extortion. It's our money, anyway. When they say they're going to withhold grants, it's our tax money, so we can't just roll over and let them bully us, because it's never going to stop. We have to stick together. Maybe we have like a, a class action with the other towns that are fighting this, but we have to say no, period.
Mr. Campbell, and, and for everybody's edification, the reason I keep calling on Mr. Campbell is that he is representing the planning board and made the motion, and therefore should be able to respond. Yes, sir.
That's why the planning board this evening voted in favor of this. The Select Board voted in favor of this. This motion takes this issue and puts it right back to the legislation with no cost. If we're talking about rejecting Article 17, if we get to that point, and we want to join up in regards to a quote-unquote "class action," there's going to be costs with that. There's going to be legal cost from a third-party legal consultant. It's not a zero-cost issue.
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator, just for point of interest, I'd like to read what the land use regulations, zoning bylaws for the Town of Hanson are. Section 1, purposes. The purpose of the zoning bylaw is to promote the health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the Town of Hanson, to protect and conserve the value of property within the town, to preserve and increase the beauty and amenities of the town, to conserve insofar as possible natural conditions and historic sites, and to secure safety from fire, congestion, or confusion by encouraging most appropriate uses of land within the town in accord with the provisions of Chapter 40A of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Home Rule Amendment, Article 89 of the Massachusetts Constitution. In no way is this intended to prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land or structures for religious purposes or for educational purposes on land owned or leased by the Commonwealth of any of its agencies, subdivisions, or bodies, or by a religious sect or denomination, or by a nonprofit education. That is currently the bylaw. I thought that was relevant to just tell what it was as we move forward, because it's way different than what the MBTA is proposing. This is a Hanson Town bylaw, correct, Joe?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, you're the last speaker. That's absolutely correct. Very astute of Mr. Hayes. I read that on Facebook, too, to read that here tonight. It's actually one of the first things that your Town of Hanson Planning Board spoke about about a year and a half ago, and Massachusetts Constitution and state law supersedes our law, and you can vet that through council if council wants to agree or...
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Thank you very much. We've been debating this for quite a while. I move to close debate.
I, I appreciate your motion. We still have some people at the microphones who have not spoken yet, so I'd like to hear from them before we go back to repeat speakers. The, yes, sir, the fellow with, is that, yes, please.
Stephen Tinglaw, 476 County Road. I'd just like to say really quick that five towns have actually voted this down, and those towns are Milton, Holden, Littleton, Marshfield, and Wakefield. Wilmington referred it back to the planning board for the fall town meeting. Secondly, all 40 senators, state senators, and 160 representatives, all of them, except four representatives, voted for this overreach. I think we need to send a message, and we need to send it today. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ruthie Ann Plunning at 22 Foster Street. I know we're talking about losing money right now, because if we vote no, we're going to run into all kinds of legal problems, but when I think about it, I think about Hanson as a country town, much... as a country town, much smaller than most of the other towns, and our area is very, very little, and they want to put 750 apartments into this one area, which, by the way, I abut two. And I just feel that in the future, there's going to be a need for more schooling, for roads, there's going to be a big jump in population, and I don't know if Hanson is ready for that. And I think it's better to take our chances. Maybe we'll be able to go with a group of, I mean, if everybody starts voting no, Massachusetts and the legislature is going to be up to their ears in court cases, and they're going to ruin the whole state.
All right. Now, everybody who's at the microphones has spoken at least once. Do you have something new to add?
I do.
Okay.
I just want to make a clarification. Mr. Campbell is saying that he wants to avoid, if I'm not mistaken, he wants to avoid sending a direct no to the state. Well, I'm standing here, and I would like to send a resounding no to the state, right here, right now, no questions asked. I'm not afraid to say it. You're not afraid to say it. If I have to be back here at special town meeting in October, I'll be here to vote again. Next year in May, I'll be here to vote again. Next October, I'll vote again to hell and back. I will be here to vote no every single time. So, vote no here, push through. What's wrong with you? You're rude. Push through, push through. This is how they act when you stand against them. Look at it. This is how they act when you stand against them. Vote no on everything, push through and defeat them now.
Mr. Stroud, Mr. Stroudman, I don't think we need to be calling the chair of the planning board them. Please.
Just looked like he was hot.
Mr. Campbell, and then we'll have one last comment, and then we'll finish.
Ladies and gentlemen, one of the things that we discussed at the planning board or amongst the planning office, if you look at the zoning area that was proposed by the town planner, there is a very large parcel that's inclusive in that area. There's absolutely zero reason why the landowner couldn't come between now and October and propose a 40B development. There isn't any reason why that couldn't have happened over the past, oh, 60 years. So, you still have zoning that is applicable to add to that area significantly, as well as reduce the town's input. 40B takes away so much. It takes away so much while using so much land.
All right.
Is this some clarity?
One, yes, your comment.
If we pass your motion, does that create that special zoning?
No.
So, it's off the books?
I would consider it to be off the- So, through, Mr. Moderator, to the question, very astute question. I believe that this motion, my motion, is pushed. It takes it off the books till at least October.
But, I mean, it's not definitive? Because you're the representative of the planning board.
The planning board would have to vote in a majority to add it to the next town meeting, which is not until October, unless there was a special that was called up specifically for this purpose. So, yes, essentially, it would push it off till October.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Again, I move to close debate.
Very good. Debate is closed. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying-
Oh, Mr. Moderator. Took me a long time to write that, Sean.
All those, well, it is Article 17 because it's the 17th article, but all those in favor of the article as moved by Mr. Campbell, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The chair is in doubt. All those in favor, please raise your blue card. What's that?
I don't know. That's what I'm telling you.
Everyone can put their cards down. You've been counted. 58, Mr. Moderator.
58?
Yes, sir.
55.
55?
42.
42. All those opposed to the amended Article 17, please signify by raising your cards now. I'm sorry, that was 42? Do we have a report from the tellers?
83.
83?
36.
36?
77.
What is it? Okay. So, by a vote of 155 in the affirmative, 196 in the negative, the motion fails.
Now, I have to read Article 17, correct?
Sure.
Article 17, I move to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Hanson zoning map to include an MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, MCMOD. The MCMOD consists of the following parcels. 49-0-12, 50-0-101, 42-0-19K, 42-0-59, 42-0-56, 42-0-19J, 42-0-18, 42-0-17, 43-0-1, 42-0-11, 42-0-60A, 43-0-29, 43-0-30, as shown in the informational warrant on file with the town clerk's office, and to amend the town of Hanson Land Use Regulations zoning bylaw by adding Section 6O, MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District, MCMOD, to meet the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, or to take other action in relation to.
I'm sorry, what's that? Motion has been made and seconded. I take it we don't need any more debate. We have debated this issue. I would proceed right to the vote. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. Article 17 is adopted. Article 18. We're not done. We have stuff to do here. Oh, come on, you can look up the Bruin score on your phone. I'll just be quiet for a second. And as a service to the town, I'm told there is no score in the Bruins game at this moment. Article 18, I move the town vote to rename the Recreation Committee to the Recreation Commission. Do we have any comments or questions about Article 18? If people could please be quiet while they're still in the hall? Any questions or comments on Article 18? I'll make it again. Article 18, I move the town vote to rename the Recreation Committee to Recreation Commission. Seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 18 is adopted. Article 19, I move the town vote to amend Part 1, Articles Relating to Town Meeting, Article 1-1 of the town's general bylaws to add a new Section 8 as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Explanation, this article will require reasonable advance notice for any new bylaw proposed through a citizen's petition to be considered by a town meeting. Any questions or comments on Article 19? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 19 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 19 is adopted. Article 20, I move the town vote to amend the town of Hanson General Bylaws Finance Committee, Article 2-10, Section 1A, by deleting the first sentence and inserting a new sentence as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Explanation, this would reduce the number of members on the Finance Committee and align the number of Finance Committee members with other towns across the Commonwealth. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 20 is adopted. Article 21, I move the town will vote to reduce the interest rate applicable to tax deferral and recovery agreements entered into pursuant, entered into pursuant to General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 18A, from 8% to 2%, which tax deferral and recovery agreements provide for a temporary financial hardship property tax deferral with such reduced rate to apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2024. Seconded. Explanation, town meeting voters will now be able to establish an alternative lower interest rate to apply to temporary financial hardship property tax deferrals. Any changes in the rate would need to be voted no later than July 1 of the fiscal year to which the tax relates. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 21 is adopted. Article 22, I move the town to apply for, accept, and expend Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program, better known as MPLCP, grant funds if approved, and further devote to transfer the sum of $150,000 from the $200,000 in ARPA funds previously appropriated in Article 6 of the October 3, 2022 Special Town Meeting for Library and Senior Center HVAC replacement. Said sums to be expended by the town for library planning feasibility and/or design. Seconded. Explanation, the library is applying for a state grant through the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program. The grant application requires a town meeting vote to appropriate funds in the amount of $150,000 in anticipation of the planning and design phase of a construction project. The amount expended from these funds for planning and design would be matched by the grant up to $100,000. The funding source for the $150,000 would be a reallocation of the $200,000 in ARPA funds previously voted at October 2022's Special Town Meeting. Seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 22 is adopted. Article 23, I move the town vote to revise its approval of Article 15 of the May 3, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, which revised the approval of Article 24 of the May 6, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, and submitting the amendment to the Acts of 2022, Chapter 133 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Legislature, a home rule petition as printed in the informational warrant. Seconded. Explanation, this article is a revision due to Article 15 of the 2021 May Annual Town Meeting stating an incorrect square footage area, 21,780 square feet for Map 105, Lot 6, and a survey showed the area is only 3,922 square feet. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 23 is adopted. Article 24, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $50,000 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund account to complete the funding for the construction of a new soccer field and football field at Hanson Middle School. Seconded. Explanation, this article was originally funded with approval of Article 7 at the Special Town Meeting in May 2023. Combined with $215,000 from community preservation funds, the state of Massachusetts provided $200,000, Hanson Youth Soccer provided $7,500, and Hanson Youth Football provided $7,500. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 24 is adopted. Article 25. Article 25 requires a two-thirds vote. I move the town vote to place the property identified as Assessors Map 67, Lot 17, into the care and custody of the Water Department for Water Credit Land Protection under the Massachusetts Water Management Act and Regulations 310 CMR 36. Seconded. Explanation, the new well off Old Pine Drive is authorized to pump 291,000 gallons per day. Under a credit system established by Mass. Department of Environmental Protection, the well can be authorized to pump 340,000 gallons per day. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 25 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it by the required two-thirds. Article 25 is adopted. Article 26. We have a motion to pass over. Is it seconded? Seconded. Any questions or comments on passing over Article 26? Seeing none. All those in favor of passing over Article 26 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 26 is passed over. Okay. Article 27, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash $15,000 to treat invasive phragmites, which I now know because of town meeting is a plan, phragmites at Smitty's Bog. Do I have to read that over again? Okay. Seconded. Explanation, phragmites have invaded the Smitty Bog Reserve and threaten to spread throughout this important resource area. This request will fund the second and third annual treatments. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Just a comment. Phil Clemmons, 46 Main Street.
Chair of Conservation. This actually, while it asks for money from free cash, this is actually going to be a financial wash because we have in our hands a contract with the USDA, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, to reimburse the town for $14,000 over the next two years for this very task. The term is actually phragmites, so, you know, sort of a Greek word, so forgive us. But it's something we didn't used to have, but it's everywhere, and if you enjoy walking through a land state, we had ten-foot tall weeds, you can't see anything else, then never mind. But if we wish to keep this noxious plant at bay, this would be a good idea to vote for. And again, the USDA, who actually holds a deed on the property, not a deed, but a deed restriction, that requires us to manage it in a responsible way, they're willing to pay us to manage it in a responsible way by doing this.
Thank you. Did you introduce yourself, Mr. Clemens?
Yeah. Phil Clemens, forty-six Main Street.
Thank you.
Been there for years and don't plan to move.
Thank God. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article twenty-seven, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article twenty-seven is adopted. Article twenty-eight, I move the town vote to authorize the Select Board to accept and enter into a contract for the expenditure of any allocated or to be allocated funds by the Commonwealth and/or county pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter ninety for the construction, reconstruction, and improvements of town-accepted roads. Said sum of money to be expended under the direction of the Highway Director. Seconded. The explanation, this article is a requirement of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the Town of Hanson to accept state funding, including Chapter ninety funding for accepted roadways. This article authorizes the use of funds, which will be 100% reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The budget approved each fiscal year by the legislature and governor establishes the total funding available for Chapter ninety, local transportation aid, for that year. Any questions or comments on Article twenty-eight? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article twenty-eight signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article twenty-eight is adopted. Article twenty-nine, we have a citizen's petition. Mr. Smith?
Oh, no, you can go ahead and read it. I'm just standing up ready to talk when you're done reading it.
I think you have to read the motion.
Oh, I do. Okay. Didn't realize.
I don't have the motion in front of me.
Yeah. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to adopt the following ban on the sale of miniature, single-use, oh, by the way, Steve Smith, Monroe Street, single-use containers of alcoholic beverages as a general bylaw and to assert into the town's, oh, sorry, into the bylaws of the town as follows. Definition, miniature, single-use alcohol.
Oh, Mr. Smith, hold on a moment.
All right. In the motion, I move.
Oh.
Okay. And I want you to do, I move, the same thing you do.
The clerk is conferring simply because these motions have to be read exactly as required by the state.
Okay, so, I move.
Sorry. Okay. I move.
The town.
To, oh, sorry.
The town to vote.
The town to vote to adopt the following ban on the sale of miniature, single-use containers for alcoholic beverages as a general bylaw and to insert into the town's bylaws, oh, sorry, into the bylaws of the town as follows.
As printed.
As printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Smith?
All right. Definition, miniature, singular-use alcohol containers or NIPS, any balder that's less than 100 milliliters or less in size. Establishment shall mean any business within the Town of Hanson offering NIPS for sale. Findings of purpose, finding the town meeting, find and determine that NIP bottles are harmful to the environment and wildlife as they take hundreds of years to biodegrade, leach toxins, and are not recyclable in Massachusetts due to their size. NIP bottles are a significant part of the litter of the town. NIP bottles are frequently found on the roadside, discarded by motorists who may have consumed contents while operating a vehicle. B, purpose, the purpose of this bylaw is to help lessen deterioration of the environment, provide an additional method to protect public and private property from litter while reducing some of the burden of law enforcement. And three, to increase public safety by discouraging driving well intoxicated. Section C, declaration, town meeting declares that for all these reasons, as well as the others, that NIP bottles are a nuisance to the town and must be abated, set forth herein. Ban of sale of NIPS by establishment within Town of Hanson, the sale of alcoholic beverages containing less than or equal to 100 milliliters is prohibited by all establishments within Town of Hanson effective January first, 2025.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments, Mr. Smith?
Yeah. So, or as I said, but, oops. If anybody hasn't seen it yet, there's a picture that was put on the informational out there of a kid's swimming pool that was filled with 2,067 NIPS that were picked up over two hours by about 30 or so people. That didn't even begin to touch it. I walked through the area that I personally cleaned last week. It had another 50. I guess I could skip the part where I say, hi, Steve. Nip bottles are a blood on the beauty of our town. A week ago, we had the Hanson cleanup volunteer event, and two hours managed to collect it, but, yeah, I already said that part. I personally filled four bags with me and my family. I ran out of bags before we got back. The idea of banning NIP bottles is not new. Chelsea, Falmouth, Mashpee, Wareham, Newton, and there's a couple others that I forgot, and most recently, New Bedford have all done so. Boston does not allow any new transfers, new or transferred liquor licenses to sell them, sorry, when they're applying for a new one or transferring. Plymouth banned it recently, but it was overturned after the liquor industry spent about $50,000 putting out propaganda, much of which has been proven to be false, or was at least deliberately deceptive because they used COVID-year statistics. They, even then, they only overturned it by 1.5% of the vote. Over in Halifax, the beautification group has tallied up the NIPS that they've picked up over the last three years at 19,000. Most of those, over half of those, were found within a quarter of a mile of a liquor store. These bottles cannot be recycled. They're destined for the landfill or far too often on the side of our roads, tossed out the window of a car on the roadside near where they were purchased. We find them frequently near liquor stores that which have refrigerators on the front that says, "Nips on the Go." They are cold, so they can be drank immediately. Just promoting drunk driving. The issue is not that we don't, that, it's not just that we don't want litter. This is also a matter of public safety. Chelsea was the first to ban NIPS, and as such, has the most data for us to go by. Town officials have stated that OUI, public intoxication, and alcohol-related ambulance responses are all reduced since they passed their ban in 2018. Now, obviously, Hanson is very different from Chelsea, but the point still stands. These bottles are very easily concealed in public places and discarded into, oh, sorry, onto the roadside. Roy Avalenda, who was actually quoted in the handout here, Chelsea City Council stated that, quote, "The impact of the ban has been overwhelmingly positive." Just look at the numbers. I looked up those numbers, and they are as follows. Pre-ban alcohol ambulance, alcohol-related ambulance calls, 742 the prior year. The year after it took effect, 127. It was an 83% reduction in alcohol-related ambulance calls. Public intoxication went down from 222 arrests down to 86, more than half, over 60%. In terms of the litter that was picked up, it was previously a significant majority of the litter that was picked up. In several of the towns, it's 30 to 40% of all litter that's picked up in the town are NIPS. In the city of Chelsea, where they did another study on that, it was insignificant. They found barely any NIPS when it was previously in the thousands. I urge you to pass this. We're not the only ones doing this. There's several other towns that are currently doing it. Boston is currently considering going from the previous of no new stores may do it to no stores may do it. They're looking to ban it. There have been countless attempts, because I'm sure somebody will argue this, but there have been countless attempts on Beacon Hill to try to ban this, and they always fail. They always fail in committee. They've been, they have tried it every single session for the last 20 years, and every single time, it doesn't even go to a vote. It dies in committee. For the last 30 years, they've also been attempting to change the deposit, to put a deposit on them. Those also failed. They can't even get the regular bottles to go up to 10 cents. It's still 5 cents. But I would also point out, before anybody says so, they're not recyclable. Even if you collect a deposit on them, recycling companies don't want them. They are not able to go through the sorting machines. They get discarded immediately. So.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Thank you very much. Joe O'Sullivan, 625 West Washington Street, one mile from the 1458 Liquor Store and at the intersection of West Washington Street, Home Street, and County Road. Each time I mow my lawn, I pick up three to five NIP bottles that are deposited on my lawn by people unknown. The other issue I have with them is when you don't see them and you hit them with your lawnmower, pick them up like shrapnel out of the bottom sides.
I've done that.
Please, please support this ban. It doesn't help anybody in town to have to drive through liquor, NIP bottles all over the road or also be dodging people while they're throwing them out the window, on both sides, by the way. So anyhow, please support this. I do.
Yes, ma'am? Yes.
Stacy Savage, 742 High Street. We walk our dog regularly, and on High Street, it's a busy street. We're also right near 1458. And I bring an extra bag with me. We walk in cemetery, and I pick the NIPS up. You can't legislate common sense and decency in good manners. We learned as toddlers not to litter. It doesn't matter if it's a plastic NIP bottle. They can go back and make them glass. I've seen some smashed glass ones, too. The plastic really, it kind of, it doesn't really matter type of thing. But you can't legislate this because it's just going to harm the small businesses that sell these things. That's all.
Mr. Smith?
So, actually, there have been studies in the towns that have banned it, most recently Falmouth, and a study that was done there where they polled the town, they polled the liquor stores to see what the effect was. There was no noticeable decrease in their revenue because the people just simply bought the next highest-up bottle, which has a higher profit margin. All of the stores that were polled reported insignificant change in revenue.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is.
Oh, are, I'm sorry. Are you a visitor?
No.
Oh, could I get your name and address, please?
Yes. Vishnu Patel, five Christopher Lane, Hanson.
Thank you.
I'm also owner of the business in other town and living in a Hanson. I know how much it would affect the business if this NIPS ban would go in effect. We should listen to the people who own the liquor store in this town, welcome their ideas, what they can do to solve the problem instead of banning the NIPS or instead of hurting the business. I would like to say, one incident at my store, there's a guy literally throwing the juice bottle and pints or half pints, Smenov, in my parking lot. I saw on a camera, and then, next time he came, I said, like, I would not serve you because last time I saw you in a camera that you were throwing the things in my parking lot. So what he did, he showed me the finger and went to the other store, bought it, and throw it in my parking lot. Literally, I saw that. So it's literally the, it's a, people need to be changed. People need to see, this Hanson is not the town. This is your home. You cannot literally throw anything in anywhere. Thank you very much.
And, and, thank you, sir. I see a couple people with visitors' badges. It's a longstanding policy of the town meeting not to hear from visitors unless you're a town official. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, guys. Adam Volkovic, 372 Home Street. I just wanted to put some numbers around this, right? Theme tonight, before half the meeting left, of course, was conservationism and keeping the town the way it is, and all this fun stuff, right? I'm going to break some math around the NIP bottles. Nice enough, or two of the liquor store owners actually give me these. One did not. Liquor stores confirm they sell between 900 and 1,500 NIP bottles a day in Hanson. I'm going to extrapolate that out really quickly for everybody so we can understand the math. That's 6,300 to 10,500 a week. That is 27,900 to 46,500 a month. Finally, yearly, 328,500, basic case scenario. On the top end, 547,500 NIP bottles in a 10-square-mile town. That is ridiculous. There's no loss of revenue to the town from these things if we don't sell them. There's nothing that's going to affect us except for betterment and drunk driving and people not drinking them, and we can't recycle them anyway, so get rid of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith? Presumably the last word.
Yeah, I just wanted to, so, thank you. I just wanted to add on to clarify his point about the no loss of revenue to the town. Since 2010 or 11, I forget when it is, but basically, we're not allowed to tax alcohol at all. So, doesn't make a difference. If their revenue does go down, the town doesn't see any less. We only collect property tax from them. However, I would point out that, as I've mentioned before, there has been studies done, and no significant loss of revenue was found to result from banning NIPS.
Seeing the microphones empty, all those in favor of Article twenty-nine signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article twenty-nine is adopted. Now, thank you all for hanging in there. You guys were great. I just want to point out, before I adjourn, that we have an election coming up, May 18th, from 10:00 to 5:00, right here. Please come out and vote. I now adjourn this town meeting. Seen die.